Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Oviedo City Council Workshop. It is approximately 6:30 PM on September 15th. The discussion tonight is on maintenance of Oviedo on the Park. We'll turn it over to Mr. Cobb.
Thank you, Mayor. At your June 23, 2014 work session, you asked Mr. Bowe Ware to come in and give you a discussion on the maintenance programs in Center Lake Park as well as the right of ways within Oviedo on the Park. And the idea was to give you what we thought our expectations were for the level of maintenance. And we also brought to you some, what we call, equivalents. City Hall was one of them. Riverside Park was another one. And we sought your input regarding how you would like, the level of maintenance that you would like to see in this area. And we gave us a very high standard. And the other thing you asked us to do was, you asked us to go and look at if there were ways that we could outsource certain parts, if not all, of the services. And to bring back a comparison as to what it would be utilizing city staff. So Mr. Bowe Ware went out and obtained quotes from three different companies and put together a spreadsheet for you to show the cost of those programs. He also took the cost and broke it down to a five-month program, which is what it would be once the park opens, and then a 12-month program to show what would be the annual cost. He also, as part of, one of the things Mr. Britton asked us to do was to visit with other cities to come up with what they're doing. Mr. Bowe Ware also visited some other cities and got information from them to report back. What I'd like to do is turn it over to him and let him walk you through what he, his findings and his recommendations and then turn it back over to you, Mayor.
Hey, Drew. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and council members. I appreciate you giving me the opportunity to make this presentation tonight on Center Lake Park and Oviedo on the Park as far as the maintenance. What I'd like to do first is to, I've got a small slideshow. Mr. Britton had asked us to do, kind of look at some comparisons of other cities and how they take care of their downtown park areas. And so what I did was I visited Winter Park, Winter Garden, Ultimatum Springs. And what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna walk through that. Initially with Winter Park. Winter Park, the downtown area is about 12.68 acres. The streetscape, total linear feet is 18,000. They have full-time, they have two full-time service maintenance workers that really basically mow, blow, and go, maintain all the mowing, edging, and that type of thing. They also have a full landscaping crew that maintains all of the planters and the hanging baskets in the downtown business district. Now, they also, along their main park avenue, they have some side streets that go off of that. They also maintain the public safety area, the library, the open park area. That's all in that 12.68 acres downtown. The estimated salaries for staff, not including the operating, is about $152,000. And the operating costs, including tree trimming, spraying, fertilizing, maintaining hardscape and hard cost of equipment, was not provided to us at the time. So just the cost of the operating is about $152,000. They have one fountain in that area. They do have a huge amount of landscape pockets, as well as all the hanging baskets on the street, on the street scape, as well as major pots that are very similar to what we're gonna have on Oviedo on the Park. Next city was downtown Winter Garden. I will tell you, Winter Garden does an excellent job with their maintenance of the streetscape. They also do this in-house. The only thing that Winter Garden does is they outsource the common mowing area. I don't know how many of you are familiar with Winter Garden, but Orange County Trail goes right down through the middle there. And so they have some grass area right down through the middle of that area. And actually, the day I was there, the outsourcing group was mowing that area. But they, city staff maintains all the right-of-way, the splash pad, all the planters, as well as all the hanging baskets, and then all the hardscape. The streetscape, linear footage is about 2,800 square, or 2,800 linear feet of right-of-way. And their estimated total budget, not including the hard costs, is about $225,000 for the downtown area. The splash pad operating cost is about $10,000 a year. And I will tell you, I was very impressed with their splash pad. I don't know if you've seen it. The way that they build it, kinda, they kinda built it up. And they built landscaping with shade structures all around it. It was very impressive. Crane's Roost. We went and talked to Crane's Roost and met with their staff. Their city, they have 13 acres that does not include the lake. When you put the lake, theirs goes up to about, I think, 55 acres with the lake. The lake, the body of water is a very huge body of water. They have eight full-time service maintenance workers with total salaries of $436,609. They maintain the city, the mowing, the right-of-way, the planters, hanging baskets, hardscape, including floating docks and event stage. They also have, they have a boardwalk on the north side that they maintain. There's a huge amount of landscaping. They do have a couple of fountains and, but they do have a lot of open landscape pockets. And the total annual salaries and operating budget is $756,014. Oviedo, Center Lake Park. The total area for us that's gonna be maintained is 17.53 acres. The streetscape is estimated at right around 4,500 linear feet of right-of-way. What we are suggesting is our annual staffing operation budget. And that is, that was the annual budget at 343,121. And that is directly related to the park itself. We, within the budget that was requested, we requested actually, and this also includes all custodial staff, maintenance staff for the building also, was 463,452,33. But I prorated, I broke that out because the majority of the maintenance staff, of course, is going to be going to the building. So I just wanted to make that point clear. We, for the fiscal year 2014-15 staffing, for the five months, we're requesting $142,967 as far as if we were to keep it in-house. And it's recommended that city staff maintain all the mowing, right-of-way, planters, hardscape, docks, boardwalks, splash pad, five fountains, and two event stages. So that kinda ends the PowerPoint. The next thing, each of you, too small to put on the screens, but each of you have the spreadsheet that basically has City of Oviedo with Dora Landscape and Central Florida Landscape Maintenance and Eastwood Turf Tough, Tough Turf Excursioning Landscaping. I will tell you, in the process of requesting, we requested all the different items on the left-hand side. Several of the companies in the process of getting back to us. Of course, if you see, everything in the blue is areas that they no-bid or basically said that you would not be able to give us a quote on. So what we did with those areas, we placed our city cost in there, letting council know that if we were to, if council was to consider outsourcing any of these groups, these are still areas that the city would still have to be able to pick up with city staff maintaining these areas.
So that 12-month total is total cost? That's the contract cost plus our cost?
Yes.
And the outsourcing?
Yes. And then down below, it's the five-month cost. So if you, if you look at the 12-month cost, it's 343,120,82, ours with.
That includes salaries and everything?
That's salaries and everything. And it also includes, just, I did make a note, and if you look at the very small writing, the total cost of CIP equipment is initially in the first year is $100,065. And I made a note that annualization cost will be reflecting, actually, the 15-16 budget. And each piece of equipment will be based on comparable depreciation schedule because not all equipment are based on the same amount of time period when they're replaced. And then if you go through each individual other group, what we did, like I said, we-
And that's not reflected in 343, $100,000?
That's reflected in the first year as far as that 142.
$100,000?
Yeah.
It's not reflected?
Yes.
Right, okay.
That's just a note that I wanted you to know that what-
And how many employees? You didn't answer that question.
Okay, I'm sorry. With us, it's, the first year what we're putting in for three months is three park staff, one pool tech, and one facility maintenance, custodial position. What we had requested for annual was five park staff, one pool tech, and three full-time custodial maintenance.
Why do we need a pool tech? There's something that's automatic that's just gonna be-
We gotta clean the fountains, and we gotta clean the splash pad. Pool health regulations requires us to go down and check the chemical levels twice a day during any time operation. We will have to clean it off. The splash pad is just as high level as any pool. If there's any kind of-
Okay, I get it.
Yes.
Yeah, but this is sounding like some of these old stories where the pool tech guy can't do some other. Can you cross-train a maintenance guy to do the pool tech stuff?
With, what we've looked at staffing-wise, with maintaining the fountains in the park, the fountain in the pond, and they will also, I made a deal with Mr., sorry, no, Bobby.
Oh, why?
Yeah. His name escaped me for a second. Sorry, I apologize. Is that if the, if the pool tech does go in, that person will also end up taking care of the two fountains here at City Hall. So they're gonna be taking on additional workload.
Drew, I'm sorry. I don't see the Veterans Park in here. Don't they have water running that needs to be maintained?
That's one of, that's one of the, well, that's part of this.
I'm sorry?
It's part of the-
It's part of the family.
Okay.
How many FTEs for the east, if it was Eastwood Tough Turf Landing, what's the FTEs for that?
Don't know. They, they do not break, they-
No, no, you, you- Councilman, Deputy Mayor wants to know how many FTEs?
For us, our employees. We then would need how many employees to do the blue in there?
If we were to outsource any of this, of course, if we were to outsource Dora, we would have less FTEs because basically we're doing the splash pad.
How'd you guys figure it out?
Well, I would tell you, okay, real quick, Dora, you'd be basically FT-ing one person because it'd be the splash pad and the fountains. With Central Florida Landscaping, with the work that would still have to be performed, we would still be looking at least annually, at least three additional people.
And probably the same with Eastwood Tough?
Now, let me paraphrase. Three additional park staff, we'd still have to have the same amount of custodial staff because the custodial staff is also maintaining not only the amphitheater cultural center, but three additional buildings in the park.
So that would go like the 3-1-3?
Yes.
Can I say? It's in a five. Pick you back on that, Councilman, right? I just heard of, you know, five employees. You rattled off five, eight, you know, all these employees just for the park. I mean, are these employees gonna be used elsewhere also?
With the amount of land base that's down there, we have figured, we've got a good plan that is gonna take, on an annual basis, it will take five park staff to maintain that, how council has portrayed us of the, of how y'all want us to maintain it. It will take five park staff to maintain it on an annual, daily basis. That's seven-day-a-week operation from early morning till late at night with planning special events, you know, possibly 22 out of 52 weekends with special events.
This is up and down Oviedo Boulevard?
That's from Mitchell Hall, all the way down Central Plaza to 434, back to Oviedo Boulevard, everything around the lake.
Up and down Oviedo Boulevard?
Not, this does not include Oviedo Boulevard.
Well, you see, to me, then, you know, why can't the people who are gonna do the park do Oviedo Boulevard also?
Presently, Oviedo Boulevard is-
Because now we're gonna have equipment. We're gonna have, you know, all this stuff. Why pay somebody else to do it?
And we can, we already looked at that in discussing that with park staff. To take on the additional land acreage of Oviedo Boulevard, you're looking at probably at least another two to three full-time staff. Of all the additional land. And I need to ask Doug, what do we estimate the distance from one end to another, four times of edging, blowing, and?
Approximately four miles from water.
Yeah, you gotta look, when CFL comes in, and as I say a lot of times, mow, blow, and go, they're edging down each side of the road, okay, because of sidewalk, one time down, one time back, one time down, one time back. And they're blowing the same thing, and then they're mowing the same thing. So it's, it's a long distance. And, you know, when they come in, of course, they bring in, they bring in multiple people. And they have routinely, they have one guy edging, one guy blowing behind them, and they have a guy on the mower, at least. And then they might have someone pulling weeds. When they, when they usually pull weeds, they gain pull, as I say, and bring a full crew in to pull weeds, when they pull weeds.
Drew, are, are they able to do that whole Oviedo Boulevard in one day with the crew that they bring?
No. They, they do, they take, I mean, I can ask, we can ask Bobby that, but you're saying they do it all in one day?
They do it in all in one day? Then what do they do?
But they, when, now, I want that emphasized. They might mow, blow, and go in one day. They don't maintain everything in one day. They don't trim trees, they don't pull weeds.
It just seems to me that we're not gonna be, I don't know, mowing and blowing and edging if you don't want the park in one day.
One of the things that's, yeah, one of the things that's not in here that is just kinda, one of the things that we've thrown in is that staff will also be taking over since the staff is going to be maintaining this. Staff would also be taking over Bosco Hill Park, which we would have some savings from CFL because we would end up taking that. And what my idea was there is since the future fire station is gonna be being, or built down there, I thought it'd be nice if we would maintain that area to make that as the highest level presentable, you know, area downtown, too. So we would be taking those additional duties. Right now, the common mowing area and all that is taken is outsourced through CFL.
Brian, I have two questions. One is, the HOAs to maintain Lockwood Boulevard, it's a bigger road. Is there a way that we can turn over some of Oviedo Boulevard over to the HOAs in the neighborhood and they come on board?
I think it's a little bit different. You may have one neighborhood at best.
What about a district association or a district fee for maintaining that?
We definitely can, as far as the special fee for that area.
Are we allowed to?
I mean, I thought we gave them a- Huh?
Special taxing district?
We definitely can say, we might have one of our agreements.
I believe we gave a special taxing district away. We can't get a special taxing district.
No, it's not, it's a maintenance fee. Not a tax.
I was just saying, I think we might have, but, you know, in a few years, they'll be the CRA, I mean, that can use for stuff, so.
The way I look at it is it's the city subsidizing that area, and the residents that are living there are the ones that are gonna benefit.
But it's not, that's not, Lockwood is a odd example, is a good example, but other areas don't have that same, out by us, none of the HOAs. Well, they take care of the side, some of them.
Take care of the-
Like, Live Oak takes care of, actually, Carrion Road outside. If you look across, Sanctuary doesn't mow in front of it, but Live Oak will mow and take it front of, even on that. So I'm just saying, no, that's just what they, you know, do.
With Lockwood Boulevard, it's a good, Lockwood Boulevard's a good environment because you've got Twin Rivers. It's in Twin Rivers, and then it's in Little Creek, you know, and they're on, you know, they're on both sides. The example of Oviedo Boulevard, that's-
Is it gonna be on both sides of it? Are we only developing one side of Oviedo Boulevard?
Well, you're not, you're not gonna have, you're not gonna have distinct neighborhood. It's not, it's not in between a distinct neighborhood. It's not a, it's not-
It's a distinct district. It's a defined district, right?
Yeah, but everybody voted for it.
I have no problem looking at it. I, to me, it's looking at, you know, I have no problem with what he's saying. It's just, I think there's a-
I'm pretty sure we, not one of us-
Drew, can I just say, you know-
We had it back and gave it away.
Look, each one, if you look at each one of these things, I mean, just, you know, mow, edging, weed, pulling weeds, everything, you're gonna have five guys out there for seven, almost 18 acres. You know, my question is, is not that we have enough and can we use them, is that these five guys are gonna be able to do it? That's a lot of work. I mean, just the splash pad, I mean, the work that's required to take care of that splash pad is a lot, is a lot of work.
And that's why, I mean, one of the things I was gonna make note to council is, because, you know, I, it, it's somewhat difficult to kinda explain, explain sometimes with maintenance. The hardscape that's down there is, is massive. The pressure cleaning that's gonna take to maintain once, and I know it, once it's new, it's new, but a year down the road, mildew's gonna be growing because you've got fountains. There's already, right now, the fountains aren't being maintained. You have mildew and mold and everything growing all over the fountains presently. You have weeds growing in the planters. But I just wanted to, if I can, right now, you've got 62 brick landscape planters down there. 62 brick landscape planters. We have 72 pots. We have four acres of, close to four acres of open Bermuda.
Let's just stop there.
Well, I just want, I want-
Let, let Councilman Brick go next.
I, I just wanna, I want council to understand, though, it's not, in the Bermuda, if you want us to keep that lawn in a very high quality, it, it's not just mowing it. It's, it's high level of maintenance of keeping it like a ball field. And-
You're not gonna be fertilizing it, closing it down, and having residents calling us that they can't call on the amphitheater grass, are you?
We will have to, if we maintain Bermuda grass like a field, you have to close it down at certain times. Not for weeks at a time, but you have to, if you put nematodes out and things like that, and curfew out and certain things at times of year, you have to close it down for 48-hour periods. You're required by law if you put that type of material down. Now, we're not gonna do it for long periods, but I will tell you, if, you know, one of my worst nightmares is that we have a huge concert down there with 3,000 people on the lawn, and it rains. Because if anyone's ever seen an open lawn area rain, it can become a muddy mess in a matter of an hour. And it could end up almost ruining the sod overnight. So, you know, I-
Your point, your point to the planters and the pots, I mean, those are all self-irrigating, so we don't-
Self-irrigating, but you still have to cut back, you still have to pull weeds, you still have to cut back and trim back. I will tell you, that's one of the reasons I made point about Winter Garden. Winter Garden has let their flat, their pots and flowers and everything grow, but you still have to do a routine cutback annually on all those because if not, they just get unsightly. So there's, there's work that has to be done. I will tell you, in talking to the director from Winter, Winter Park, John Hollen, he says they are finding it very difficult to maintain Winter Park with the staffing he presently has.
And that'll lead you to me. You know, my, my thing is, brought a pressure washing, I look, difference between City of Oviedo and Eastwood. Now, the Eastwood proposal, the 406, 500, basically is about half, half and half, us and Eastwood. Correct? Eastwood, roughly, the last one, Eastwood Tough Turf.
Are you talking about the pressure washing?
I'm just talking about all, like, for Eastwood Tough Turf-
Yes.
In terms of doing it all, 406, whatever, it's about almost 60, 40, them, us, doing the jobs.
Right.
Now, you brought up pressure washing. I key on pressure washing because there is a huge amount of hard surface out there. I looked at $10,000 worth versus $60,000, and I'm going, I, I don't think it's $10,000. It may not be $60,000, but I don't think it's $10,000 unless, you're gonna have to pay that guy to go doing it pretty much year-round with a pressure washer all the time. So what I look at is saying, there's jobs that are those daily jobs. And if I look at this, this bid, it kinda goes, the trash pickup every day, twice a day, the landscaping, change of flowers, that one, you know, if we can do it, that's great. But the daily stuff, having someone on site, hardscape surfaces, maintenance to include all that every day, the pressure washing, I said, I think, I think we've under-anticipated in my mind. But all the stuff we're doing in that is stuff that needs to be done daily, that has to have feet on the ground, guys doing it, versus the other stuff is much more equipment-dependent, first of all, and can be done by large-scale organizations. And I don't think that 343 is gonna be 343. I think it's gonna be closer to, by the time we're done, first of all, we got $100,000 we're gonna invest, and we're gonna invest in employees, full-time employees. Do we wanna take that all on right off the bat? Do we wanna invest in employees, equipment, all this stuff right off the bat and find out? Well, you were just saying, they're finding out they can't do it with the, with the amount of people they have on their staff. And they've been doing it for years in Winter Park, and trying, and keeping it as good as possible. I think there is a combination that could work out. And I look at this bid and say, it's not the highest, it's a 413, but I think, I think ours is a low bid. I think our numbers, like I said, there's certain numbers I look at, this, the wetland and storm mosquito control is needed, is a to-be-determined. Between that and the $50,000 difference between pressure washing, that's the difference in the two bids.
Well, and I will-
Or, you know what I mean? That's the difference in, right away, you're, you're right there at the same dollar number.
But I will let you know also, Eastwood did not bid anything for nematode control on the Bermuda. Trash pickup included, no days on the days that they're not on site, which he didn't let me know what days he wasn't gonna be on site.
But you have in-house trash pickup, scheduled two times a day for us to do it. For them, for Eastwood.
That's what we did additional, yes.
Isn't that included in the 406?
No.
If I look at the bottom cut?
No, 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 no. That's, the blue is theirs. The yellow, excuse me, bottom, no, I'm-
The bottom line is it's 406. That includes doing the whole job.
Yes.
That includes us doing in-house for $35,000 to do the trash pickup. And that's what I'm saying.
What I'm saying, yes, okay, that's, that's additional because they didn't include on their-
But it comes out to 406. It's a $60,000 difference that I look at between pressure washing and a to-be-determined, which is included in theirs, I'm there. I got the same number, roughly.
The one thing I do want to make note to council is, basically, Eastwood is maintaining the park right now. I don't know if any of you have seen the turf, but the turf is not in good shape. They're, they're utilizing rotary mowers on a turf that really should be maintained by a reel mower. That, you know, there's certain things that, I mean, and, and of course, we just went out and asked them for a bid. What we would end up doing, process of this, was we try and end up saying, asking them, I mean, right now, the only group that directly told us that they would use a reel mower on the turf was Central Florida Landscaping.
Either way, I, I, I look at, we're gonna invest in a lot of employees, a lot of equipment. I don't know that we have to, and some of the stuff that we can't, that, right off the bat, you can start this way, you can always add those people later, you could always, again, if they, if you don't like them now, then I have no problem going, well, if they're not doing the job now, you don't think they can do it. Then that's a different case. That's a, by the way, their qualities are, you know, that's, that's a different animal than a different question.
And I will-
You know, and we can go to 413 and say, well, from 406 to 413, and say, if Dora can do it, and there's some stuff, then, but again, I, I think there's a, there could be a balance. I like having us do that daily stuff. That, there's no doubt to me, the seven-day-a-week, the making sure of the weeds, the stuff like that, they're not gonna do it as well as us having people who are here seven days a week, making sure that it's blown correctly, that it's picked up correctly, that the garbage is done correctly, that kind of stuff. But, you know, the pressure washing, you know, to me, that's a, that could be outsourced so easily. And just, you know, whether it's $60,000 for a contract for the year, or quarterly or whatever, and some of this other stuff, I, I don't know that we, we should take on day one, all of it. And $107,000, and invest in all this, and then year three, go, we're overwhelmed, we were overwhelmed from the beginning, and it's very tough, we're gonna need three more people and another to be able to keep the level, you know, we want it, and not start out with the level that we want. Like you said, it's new now. The minute it starts degrading, it's gonna be, why isn't it, why isn't it? But that's gonna be really six months down the road. But we've already invested in all this. And I don't know if that's the right out-of-the-box decision. That's the only thing, you know, to weigh against. Either way, I told you already, like, I don't care. Either way, I told you already, like, I don't care, I'm, I'm, this is way in the weeds for me, that I don't really need to be in. You know, ours is, here's the, the level of quality we want, you know that, the level of, that we expect. I also don't wanna have to say, we're not there six months down the road, and, and go why, why, why? Um, you know, I'll be frank, you, you do wanna keep it in-house, and that's good, I like that, I like, you want the responsibility of all, but I don't know if we need to take that on right off the bat, that's really concerning.
Drew.
Yes, sir.
I would just, I would just say, you know, we all know this is the jewel, right, and everybody's gonna be looking forward to it, and now we say, you know, the people voted for this, and they're gonna, they're gonna wanna see a show, but you brought up a good point, this one company's already cutting the grass, and it looks like it shows the eye of the beholder. Right? And it does. So, my, my thing would be, I would like to see you start off the way you have it, and as you're out there, and you find out, okay, maybe this five wasn't enough, you bring, you talked about Winter, Winter Park is having a problem maintaining their own stuff, because they only have two people, you know? You may, Councilman Schenk might be right, you may need somebody to come in here and take that pressure washing off you, but I think going forward, this is ours, the people vote for it, this is an Oviedo thing, so I think if you have outside people doing it, I think we should be, go in there and take care of it first, and know what it needs to be done correctly, and then if we decide we need some help down the road, at least we know how, how it has to be done. I would prefer that our people are driving that, you know, car first, before someone else comes in, that doesn't even have a history with it. You'll be out there, Bobby will be out there, you all know where it came from, you can always add somebody, but he's correct, I think, you know, you may need some help down the road, because like I said, when I first commented, five may not be enough, it's almost eighteen acres, there's a lot of work to be done out there, that's overwhelming for five people, you're gonna need some help, but I think going forward, I think we could bless this, and then you tell us how it's going, and believe me, we're gonna see it, you know? We're gonna see how it's going, we'll know, you know? The only thing I wanna know is, what kind of mower are they using out there? You said they're not using a regular mower?
Well, they're using a rotary mower, I mean, if, if, the, the mower that we-
It's like a dollar stream mower.
Well, no, what basically they're doing, and one of the reasons, and one of the reasons that it's in, it's, it's in the condition is because they're a landscaping group, you know, I doubt very seriously, when, when they come from another job, they're cleaning the blades, so anything that they're bringing from where they mow, they're bringing to our site, that's why we have, you know, it's like Mr. Rice went out and walked the field the other day, we've got, what, Doug, six, seven different types of weeds growing in it, that we're gonna end up, you know, at some point inheriting. So, we would, we would use a rotary mower, but it'd be a reel-type mower that is made for Bermuda turf. So, the difference is they're using mowers that are commonly mowed, behayat, you know, everything.
And bringing, and, and using stuff that's bringing in, you know, contamination from lawns, I, I've heard that, that mowers, when they get stuff and it's caked in there, they'll bring stuff from someone's lawn that shouldn't be in there, and that's how you get weeds, but I think going forward, you gotta be out there, Bobby's gotta be out there, whoever make the show, okay, this is how we want it done, and then when you got some experience with it, all right, well, maybe this is right now outsourced somewhere, you tell them, hey, we've already done this for a year, or six, whatever the case may be, and now we need some, I think down the road, you probably gonna need some block concrete out there, especially with power washing.
And, and we do have concern also, I know Doug, and I've discussed this in length, we do have some concern with the Bermuda turf, because not all the Bermuda turf can be mowed with a mower, it's gonna have to be used, because the slant of the hills and stuff, you can't, you can't get mowers up, going down towards a lake, it's all gonna have to be hand mowed, and, uh, it's not easily, it, easy areas to maintain, it's very easy to scout, uh, and we don't, we don't want it to, we're, you know, one week and you see a nice green turf, and then all of a sudden you see brown turf-
So why do we plant Bermuda? Why do we plant Bermuda?
Well, to be honest, uh, Bermuda turf, if, if you go around the Crane's Roof, they have a turf, Bermuda turf down there, uh, you go in a lot of downtown areas, that's what you see, you see Bermuda turf, because you don't want behayat, because behayat's a common weed, anything and everything can grow in behayat. Uh, it, it, I will tell you, behayat's tough, you know, it can go without, it's very drought-tolerant, but it, 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 it's, can get thin-
I wasn't criticizing, I was just asking.
Yeah, that's, that's the reason, we, we, you know, I, I felt like Bermuda would be the best as far as, as look, and if we want Disney-like.
Didn't we put Zoysia in there?
Zoysia is on, on Oviedo Boulevard.
I don't think that's as tolerant to walking on it, though.
Uh, yeah, Zoysia is in itself, uh, a special hole, we've got Zoysia down at the pool.
Well, Brian, can I just, first off, one thing, and I know you had a second question from earlier. The, the plan was initially, we would bring in the three parks, folks, the one full tech, and then the one custodian, and then in fifteen, sixteen, we would bring in two additional park techs, and then two additional custodians. I think the full tech, you had always thought about every pool we owned.
Oh, he's gonna also do additional maintenance at pools, too.
Every, every fountain we owned, that person would cover that, so that would be widespread. So, we, we are looking at nine, you know, people, uh, to, to do that work, and, and that's, you know, all the rotten ways in, in, in the, in the park together, so I, I just wanted to plant that.
Well, you, you're talking about nine, you talk about Crane's Roof, that's thirteen acres, we have seventeen, they already have eight people, so nine isn't far off, I mean, I think, and look, everybody's trying to save some money here, and I think as we get in time, you'll, you'll figure out how to save it, but you're kinda splitting hairs here, Crane's Roof is gonna be a tough park to, to maintain, they only have eight, and it's four acres less than Lehigh, because it's a massive project over there.
Theirs does not include their lake.
Right.
When you add the lake, they go up to about fifty-eight acres.
Right.
And they maintain the lake with those eight staff.
Well, that's even more of a case then.
Uh, uh, they, they have their own boats that they do stuff in the lake with, but they do not have chicken boats.
Let's go to Keith.
Well, the other thing I wanted to ask about, in regards, similar to what I was asking about earlier, is, every time I go down Mitchell Hammock, and I see, I guess it's CFL guys, mowing and edging the medians of Mitchell Hammock Road, it doesn't seem like that is something that we need to do every, every week or whenever we mow it, is there some way we can look at the existing contract we have with these guys, and kinda rearrange it to where maybe we don't do Mitchell Hammock as much as we've been doing it, because it doesn't need it, and we can direct some of the, that effort over to Oviedo on the park? I guess this is another question for Brian. Do we use all three of these contractors in the city?
Uh, the only one we're presently using is Central Florida Landscaping, that's our outsourcing group. Eastwood is working presently through Tom Cavanaugh, as far as the maintenance on the park presently, because they did the landscaping in the park, and Dora is a, another local group that-
They're doing, they're doing the parks.
They're doing, yeah, they're doing a large, uh-
They're maintaining the parks.
Tom Cavanaugh's-
Yeah, there, there might be some synergy in looking at what we got going on and saying, hey, you know, rather than you, you guys edging the roadway, which is a safety issue in and of itself, the way they do it, knock them over to Oviedo Boulevard, let them edge that, or some, you know, some, something like that.
You're saying mow Mitchell Hammock, not necessarily edge it every week.
Yeah, well, they edge it, too. I'm like, what?
I say, that's our most heavily-traveled road, I think you'd wanna keep it mowed, but, but I get what you're saying.
You know, it's a, really, it's a retention plot.
They do it for all the problems.
Yeah, I think that's a standard policy, I see them doing it all over.
Right.
But is it really necessary on, on some of those places?
Presently, from, and the, the contract resides within Public Works, but I've read the contract, presently, how, how most of the contract is, is they have high season and, and low season. There's seven months of double mowings, and then there's five months of single mowings. Uh, and sometimes single mowings can go, I do believe, fourteen days in between, uh, during the time that's heavy season, uh, they routinely mow at least, uh, once to twice a week, or within a ten-day period, uh, because of course, heavy rains and things like that.
Does it require edging on all that landscape every time they mow? I don't do it at my house every time.
And, you know, I guess it, it'd be a preference of council, I mean, by any, it means anything can go by, I guess, wayside. Um, if you edge weekly, it's easier to take care of the-
All I'm saying is go look at it, see if there's some synergy, that we can offset some of the overkill we got in some areas and transfer, and that would be on the park.
Do they do that all year round?
I think they edge every time they mow. I think they edge every time they mow, as far as I can tell, I don't, I don't know, I haven't seen the contract.
That's it, it's a contract, and so the, the, as far as what they do, when they do, how often they do, that's all spelled out in the contract.
Yeah.
Should the contract be revised? I'm sure it could, I haven't read the contract in its entirety, so I'm, probably, you know, most contracts you can't-
It's just an observation I've, I've had for a couple months, seeing that, that just, you know, I'm going fifty miles an hour down Mitchell Hammock, and there's a guy standing in the-
Oh, he's standing in the road blowing the grass.
And he's standing in the road blowing the grass, but I'm not gonna notice the weeds being a little bit high on the, on the curb, going fifty miles an hour.
The question, the question is, and I guess this is one of the things that Mr. Bowler and I talk about quite a bit, the question becomes is, are they going to do the work to the level that we want it done?
That's another question, I'm not, I'm not telling you no good.
And, yes, you can, you can write those things into the contract, but whether or not they can perform it, that's another question, and then if they don't perform it, then what do you do? Do you get rid of them? Make sure you've got a backup plan coming in behind. Mr. Bowler's concern is, is that if we go outside, they don't live up to the expectation that he's gonna be expected to do it with his existing staff, and he's not gonna be able to meet the expectation either. And so, I mean, that's one of the things as well, and that's, one, he has really attacked this from the quality standpoint, that he believes that his folks wouldn't give you that expectation that you want.
Yeah, I think we gotta get consensus agreeing on that, I think the disagreement we have, or the unknown we have, is whether that, that budget amount is enough or not.
Is right, yeah, that's fair.
Mr. Cobb, if I can add one thing, one thing I will tell you about Ultimote Springs, and, and Jerry, the manager over there, pointed out, that within their contract, they actually have, um, three outsourced groups that can do work for them if they need it. They have them under contract, and whether, because at one point, they actually had, a lot of their additional areas were outsourced, and they brought them back in-house, because, as Jerry said, the quality was not there. However, they still have kept them on, co- under contract, because they do outsource certain things to them. And one of the things he did point out to me was that, just like CFL, we have them on contract right now, and Bobby might be able to speak to this, but I, I presently, if, if, I guess if the city really had a major problem with CFL on maintenance or something, I'm for sure there's an out clause in the contract, but we don't have a second provider to go to if we were to decide to, you know, get rid of someone. That's one of my concerns in bringing in someone on outsourcing, that is, if they're not doing the quality, and we were to have to, yeah, I, I guess we could figure out a way to possibly start a bid process before we got rid of the next, or the group that was maintaining it, but we'd have to figure that out, so that we wouldn't, because trying to bring it back in-house with the existing staff, we just, we can't do that.
Either way, the way we start is where, where we're gonna go, 'cause either way becomes a problem, you know, but it's, uh, if you're gonna hire ten people, nine people, and, and have all the equipment, you're not gonna abandon ship.
No.
You know what I mean, you're in, a- and the same thing, if you, like you just said, if you go out, you're, you're gonna have the same thing, you're not gonna, you're gonna be worried, what happens if, you know, but, I'll say, Live Oaks, about a four hundred and fifty thousand dollar a year budget for landscaping, and ours was gone, and we had another guy in a week later, who stepped up and just said, before we even put the bids out, said, try me out for a week, they're the guys they stayed with, so, you know, it's, you can find good people out there if you need to, but I, I say, either way, you know, I, I just wanna make sure, if you're comfortable, I don't care, if you're comfortable and you feel it's, that's it, like I said, I just, there's a couple of little points I'm gonna, I, I might wanna make sure of, but whichever way you choose, I, you know the standard, I think you've looked at it and heard it enough, where we wanna be, not to be comfortable with where we're gonna be, I just think we may, that number based on Ultimote's number, even though it doesn't include the lake, um, and looking at some of the breakdowns, we may be a little bit higher in number and people.
We're good at doing it in-house, and Brian's got the job of figuring out how to pay for it. Is that the consensus?
Well, I haven't spoken yet.
Oh, okay. We need to jump in.
Thank you.
Yep.
The guy who usually doesn't wanna stay.
I know, you're on a character, it's hard, brother love.
What?
I've had two questions, it took me half hour to ask.
Counselor.
Drew, um, I do wanna compliment you on this chart that you did, it is beautiful, it's, it's very clear, not like the last one. I mean, the last one was okay, but this one is, is excellent, and I think-
I have to give some of that kudos to Mr. Cobb.
I was gonna say, who really did this chart?
I did the chart, but he explained to me how he wanted me to present it to council.
It's very good, very, very good. Um, all I wanna say is, you know, we want quality, we, Oviedo on the park is a showcase, we want it to look good, we want it to be maintained good, and you're the expert on this, so if you're bringing this and you think this is the best way to go, you know, I'm for it. Um, you know, to do it, I'm not gonna tell you what lawnmower to use, or what, what kinda grass to plant, or anything like that, I'm not an expert. Um, so I'm just saying, if you two are recommending this, and that's what you wanna do, and you think that's the best, and it's the best, uh, price, you know, we want quality at a good price. So, if you think that's the way you're gonna get the job done, then I'm good with that.
You all good? Councilwoman said it exactly like I was gonna say, so, you know, this is, you know what we expect? If this is what you think is best, then, you know, we're gonna hold you accountable.
Yes, sir.
So, you know, let's just make sure that it's done right, let's make sure that we use the labor that you hire in the most efficient manner, you know, let's look at it, you know, if you add another person, maybe we take care of Oviedo Boulevard, you know, and you, and you eliminate another contract, I don't know. Um, you know, the, the, the only one thing I'll caution, is, you know, in all the years we've been here, you know, I've seen things, you know, we've seen things get put in, we've planned for things, and then the outcome's not what we expect, you know, that can't happen here, and we can't come back to the well, you know, with more money, more money, more money. You know, we, we, we've gotta do it for what you're, what you're budgeting for. If you're confident, I'm confident. That's a yes?
Yeah, I just wanna, wanna make sure council, and, and I'm on the same page. For a five-month period, we're talking about a budget of one forty-two, nine sixty-seven, and I will make note one thing, I do want council to understand, that's one custodian for a seven-day-a-week operation, so you get my point, staff is gonna have to pick up, because I don't have additional custodial staff to pick up those two other days, reg staff-
The thing with the budget, I'm gonna live with it.
No, I know, I, I, I know that, I just wanna make sure you understand, and then for the twelve-month period, it's actually with the two additional custodians, because they are more for the building, but I, I put it all together, the breakdown of the three forty-three, one twenty, eighty-two, is for basically the park maintenance and custodial maintenance of the park. With additional custodian, the budget goes to four sixty-three, five fifty-two, thirty-three, second year. So I just want council to understand what I'm requesting, doesn't, doesn't mean you're gonna give it to me, I realize that, but that's what we're requesting.
We're requesting you do all those yellow things for that price you gave us.
Yes, sir.
Drew, you know-
Give away the other hundred thousand, just come from.
Yeah, that was built in, but that's the second year, that's not this year. What, what I originally requested in the budget for this, for the building, for the facility to come on, was five maintenance staff, one full tech, and three facility maintenance custodians.
And that's three hundred and forty-three thousand, one hundred and twenty dollars a year.
That's four hundred and sixty-three thousand, four fifty-two, thirty-three. What you're not seeing, the three forty-three is just for park maintenance, of the buildings in the park and the bathroom, because the custodial staff, the three custodial staff, are maintaining the park building as well as the amphitheater. To maintain the amphitheater, it will take seven-day-a-week operation, with the park To maintain the amphitheater, it will take seven day week operation, with the park bathrooms, it'll take three custodial staff to do that. Seven day week operation, because if we have two rentals in a day, you're going to have setup in the morning, clean, possibly setup in the evening. And if we're having a big special event, we're going to have constant cleaning going on, not only in the building, but also the park bathroom.
So, the 343 is the comparative number to the landscaping companies?
Yes, sir.
So, now what you're, okay, so this other number that you're throwing out, that's additional park people for operations of the park?
No, that's additional custodial staff for the actual building. I just want, I want council to understand.
So, there's not.
I think we're already budgeting for that 1560, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right, that's.
I just want you to understand, right now, we're only bringing on.
You can do the yellow stuff for the price you paid.
Yes, sir.
The first is 142, 69.
I just want you to understand what kind of request I'm now bringing.
Hey Drew, you know, I have no doubt that you guys would make this place look good, but I'm also going to be a realist. Okay, when you buy a new house, it's taken me 17 years to get my house right the way I want it, to get the dent stays up, and back to the old, you know, how to deal with it. Aside from that, there's always a punch list of stuff, so we all have to be real, we want it to be perfect, as best it can be, but that those first couple of months you're out there when it's all done, you're going to find stuff that you didn't even think about. So, I don't want you to walk away that you can't come to us, because the people are going to be mad and citizen when they walk through there, but there's no, I don't think any of us have any doubt, you see something, you're going to fix it, it's not going to be perfect right away. It's going to take you a couple of months to figure out how this whole thing is working, how, why is it run, where they are, how they work, and all of that. So, you know, if you make a mistake the first couple of months, no one's going to crucify you for it, just, but I think what everybody's saying, no. You need to stay alive.
We've known you for how many years? I don't think, I think you know it for that.
The point I'm trying to make is, I think you know how serious it is, and how good we want it, but if something happens, you know, just don't let it happen twice. He's going to be living there, so you're going to have a pair of eyes, but, you know, I think it's all going to be good, we're all going to help you, everything is going to be fine, so have unrealistic expectations, it's new, and we got to learn it, figure out how it works. I'll bet you the pool, the big Kahuna pool, works nicer now than it did when you first got it, because you know how to use it. You know, I want the guy who operated it 100 times, not the guy who did it the first time, that's really what I'm trying to add, but I think we're good.
Anything else, Brian?
That's it, Mary.
Anybody have anything for Brian or staff?
Nope.